I want to welcome you all to the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And I now call the meeting to order. Council members, would you please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all again for attending tonight. And so, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a called meeting on October 11th, 2022, and a regular meeting on October 11th, 2022. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, then we are in need of a motion and a second. The objects.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a presentation tonight, and we will proceed with that presentation. The presentation of the Sam T. Barfield Award of Excellence to the Honorable Franklin Edmondson, Commissioner of the Revenue. We are delighted to have joining us this evening the Honorable Phil Kellum, Virginia Beach Commissioner of the Revenue and past President of the Commissioners of the Revenue of Virginia, presenting the award. Gentlemen, please come forward to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk. We want you to face everybody there, Mr. Kellum. Good to see you.
Gentlemen, if we can have you to stand in front of the dais, that way we can have light and cameras. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, and members of the community. It's an honor to be here tonight and a pleasure at the same time. I was the ninth, excuse me, 2021-22 President of the Commissioners of the Revenue Association of Virginia. And I'm here tonight to present to Frankie Edmondson, your Commissioner, the Sam T. Barfield Award. And the distinction of this award is the highest award we can, we provide in our association. It is to provide a recent example of achievement to enhance the operations of commissioners' offices around the state, or unselfishly giving their time on behalf of the Commissioners of the Revenue Association, or an example of professionalism over time. Any one of those three examples would qualify someone to be considered. Frankie Edmondson qualifies for all three. He always is willing to help in our association and pitch in. I think you know, if you know him, you know he is not a spectator in life. He is an active participant. I have to tell you, if, I'm from a very large family, one of 26 first cousins, and my father is one of 17 children. And if by chance Frankie Edmondson showed up at my family reunion, I'm sure he would know my cousins' wherewithal and what was going on with them a lot better than me before the party was over. They'd probably invite him back before me as well. He just, he gets to know people. Frankly, he, he has been active in our association. He was the 2015-16 President, and he brought his conference to right here in downtown Portsmouth. He is the Virginia, past President of the Virginia Association of Locally-Elected Constitutional Officers. That includes sheriffs, clerks, treasurers, and commissioners. And he is the Commissioner's liaison to the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers. He is, finally, the distinction I want to point out is he maintained his master's level distinction as a Commissioner of the Revenue. Sam T. Barfield was the Commissioner in Norfolk for many years, and he had an innate ability to connect people. But I'm here tonight to profess and declare that Frankie breaks barriers to connect and promote people. I'm one of the results of that, so you can blame him for me. We're lucky to have him with us. And I want to present this Sam T. Barfield Award for 2022 to you, Frankie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Madam City Manager, and Madam City Clerk, and all of my fellow citizens here in Portsmouth, is indeed my privilege and my honor to serve as your Commissioner of the Revenue. And sometimes you wonder if people aren't paying attention, and I hope to think they are. I appreciate you taking the time. I know you have a very busy schedule today, tonight, but I am very honored to bring this back home to Portsmouth. As you know, he mentioned Mr. Barfield was a Commissioner in Norfolk, and it's nice to have it in the 757 again. So when your colleagues from around the state, 127 commissioners, recognize your hard work and dedication, I appreciate that, and I hope that we continue to serve the citizens of Portsmouth for as long as they'll have us. Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, if I could ask our office to stand, because as you well know, they do a lot of work downstairs, and so we generate somewhere between $66 and $70 million for this old seaport city. And I can tell you, they're working very hard on your behalf and on our behalf to make sure that our teachers and firefighters and police officers and city employees have the revenue and the resources that they need to do the jobs that they do. So I don't want to take much of your time, but I just want to say thank you. It's an honor to bring this home, and I hope I continue to make you proud. I know I will try. And I just thank the association, and I thank for this award, and I thank the citizens for allowing me to continue to serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
How could I forget my wife? Thank you. She'd be mad as, oh, never mind, I can't even say that. My wife is here also. She just served recently, just ended her term as President of the, of the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers, and just had a conference in Virginia Beach with her. So you're right, she and I live in church, and our family is here. We attend a historic sitenary, United Methodist Church, and we're involved in a lot of community activities. I'm glad Kathy's here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Frankie, and thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Mr. Kellum, for your coming. Madam Clerk, would you please read our speaker's statement for the evening?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep. We ask you to please conclude your. At that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have come to item Public Hearing 22-305. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item we are considering at this time?
Yes, sir. UP 2212 Uptown Resolution Granted the Request of Green Leaf LLC for a Use Permit for an Urban Agriculture Facility to Grow and Cultivate Industrial Hemp and on an approximately 1.45 acre property located at 1300 High Street in the Neighborhood Mixed Use Zoning District and the Innovation Overlay District. The Future Land Use Map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth. The Comprehensive Plan Designates This Property for Commercial Use. The property is owned by Cars for Less, Inc. Planning Commission Recommends Denial. This item was deferred from the October 11th, 2022 City Council Meeting. And the resolution that you will be considering is a resolution granting a use permit to Green Leaf LLC to operate an urban agriculture facility at 1300 High Street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Would you please come forward, state your name and address, and, sir, you will have 10 minutes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening to you. Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, good evening, Mayor Glover, City Council, City Manager. I'm Linda Wallace. I live in Chesapeake, 1013 Shore Creek Trail. This is my partner.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Sean Thorwood. I also live in Chesapeake, 3112 Munchwalla Road.
Tonight, we have, hopefully, we, everyone in front of us have received the document that we are going to speak from, and we don't have a lot of time, so we're going to try to move as fast as possible.
Yes, sir.
So. Out we, the Green Leaf Team has gotten together so that we can come up with a better plan for our program this time. So I want you to explain to them what the Green Leaf.
A team of us come together, and we're trying to design alternative medicines. We're trying to produce at the location CBDs. It is a cannibal, or it's produced from cannabis. We will not be producing THC from, from any of the plants we're doing. And I've written down, it's, we'll be able to do three, three different strains of cannabis at this time, so we can produce medical-grade relief in multiple ailments, for multiple ailments. CBD is a chemical found natural in cannabis, marijuana, and hemp plants. CBD does not cause the high feeling that is produced from THC. Our intentions are to produce hydroponic cannabis indoors in a completely controlled environment, being able to control all aspects of the growth from nutrients, temperature, humidity, light spectrums, and it'll allow us to produce a quality product every time, a consistent product that we can have tested and shown. Our facility design will also allow us to invite others to take tours and see exactly how the process is done. So we've got a design that, we're dubbing the Green Mile. You'll be able to walk in and see everything from, from the mother plants to the clones all the way through the flowering, through the large windows, not exact, you know, access to the, to it, because we don't want to cause any kind of investments. Our goal is to harvest the plants at this location and transport to another facility in Portsmouth to manufacture concentrated oils and flowers. We will then produce our own line of oils, lotions, and pre-rolls to sell in a retail area at that location. The remaining product will be sold to other facilities and producers of high-quality alternative remedies. The facade of the building, and I think it's up on the screen now, is, we're looking to change it to coincide with our coastal location, having earth tones and green walls, natural green walls. The parking lot will have raised beds or raised gardens, and a majority of the parking lot pole lights are going to come down to, to create a more warming feeling, not an industrial look, because I know that that avenue is, you know, I've seen the design that Portsmouth is really trying to create going down High Street. We intend on having solar to become, to help become a green location, not be a burden on our local power company. We will be harvesting rainwater to be used in all aspects of the facility, again reducing the burden on local utilities. Our drain water will not overburden the city infrastructure either, as we intend to reuse as much water as we can filter. Our lighting system will be LED, so we'll not have any heavy heat outputs. Our HVA systems will have charcoal and other media filtering systems to keep our cannabis smells to a minimum and not upset our neighbors and our, the companies, other businesses around us. We are looking to provide jobs in the community for a long time to come, as well as having garden, community gardens in the exterior, raised gardens. We have an open, we hope to have an satellite location for TV University out of Florida at our location so that we can educate the community, give them an opportunity to qualify for jobs in this new and growing industry of cannabis cultivation. We believe there's a large future in this industry from design, management, cultivation, sales, and medical research. Being examples in our community in these areas, instead of just talking about them, will show the steps to take and allow us to help them along their paths to achieve our expectations. With approval, we can begin hiring within the community for demolition, construction, setup, and development. And interaction between community and business would be a huge investment in the future. The owners themselves are from the area with strong ties to the Hampton Roads. The partnership intends to get with the City of Portsmouth Sheriff's Department to see if individuals would come and get knowledge and work in this field. We would offer high school students in the city to come and see the industry and offer training for these young adults that are interested. We do not want to rezone and limit the potentials at this location. Urban agriculture, retail, and future education would be a great business to add to the Portsmouth' growth potential, as well as additional revenue for, or avenue for revenue. Producing THC products to be sold to the general public, dulling their potential for the future is not the intention of our partners. We are interested in medical aspects of helping people with an alternative to medical cures such as pills and vaccinations for a more comfortable and enjoyable life from natural resources. Again, thank you for your time, and we're open to questions you may have for us.
Thank you, sir. To my colleagues on council, do you have any questions for the presenters at this time? Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Are there licenses involved, accreditations, to do such a thing, to break the plant down? What experience? Does the state give licenses? The federal government give licenses, certificates, things of that nature?
Yes, sir. We hold a license from the state of Virginia to produce industrial hemp and marijuana. There's not, we do not have a license to produce THC, and that, you know, it's still illegal to produce it in that, in this, in this kind of setting, and it's not really what we're trying to go after.
And there has been proof of licenses to, to do such a thing.
Mr. Baldwin, sir, can you speak to the councilman's question at this time?
Yes, there is a license required by the state for them to grow and harvest this plant.
We have.
And to profit, yes.
Have we seen no license?
It's been approved by the state.
And we already, we already have that license for this location.
During the process that we collect.
Okay, so to answer your question, assuming, for example, if City Council approved the use permit, they would come back through the permitting process with the city, ultimately leading to a business license, and they would need to provide all of their permit information during that process.
Oh, okay.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Hi.
Excuse me, Mr. Battle, were you done, sir? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. Of course, I love the idea. I know that it is something that the community has been in need of and wanting for quite some time. I guess the question I'm looking, I see that the Planning Commission has denied the process. So for council and our audience here, you know, what are the drawbacks that were causing the denial?
They never said.
We, I'm sorry. We, we had got feedback from two of the.
Do you move up closer to the mic, sir, so we can hear you, please?
Yes, sir. I apologize.
No worries. Thank you.
The feedback, the fear was that we would start growing THC at that location. That's, that's not what we're looking to do. That's not the direction we're going, not right here. I mean, it's not, it doesn't fit. You know, that, that's, that's going to dull your community, that's going to slow your kids. You know, this is just not what we're trying to produce here. That's not what we want to be involved with, and I don't think that we had the opportunity to express that.
And I know there's a church that butts right up close to your building and the community that's surrounding. Were there any oppositions there?
Not at all. We've had, we've spoken with them on numerous occasions, and we've expressed a lot of, during the construction times, you know, some work that they needed over there. So they, they have been on board with us.
Okay. And what is the closest grow facility that would be this closest to this?
There's nobody in the area growing CBD. You have one, one facility that produces THC, Columbia Care, and they have, you know, that's, you can't get in without a medical card.
Right.
What they're producing is not what we want to be involved in.
And this is not a vertical license where you would grow and then also be a dispensary or sales?
It's retail. It would be retail at that location.
So you would grow, and then people would be able to come in and also purchase there?
You would not have to pay to come in, you don't need a medical license, you don't need a, you know, doctor's note or anything of that nature. Like I said again, what we're producing is, it's not any kind of mind-altering or body altering feeling that you receive from the plant. The THC-producing plants create that, the high, the dull, the numbing feeling. CBD, you could, you could smoke it for days, you can adjust it, it's not going to get you high.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor, then Councilman Woodard, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. You mentioned you didn't have an opportunity to get your case out to planning. What prevented that?
So when we presented it to the Planning Commission, we, we presented it, and we sat down, they voted on it, and it was denied, and we got no explanation at all.
Okay. How many employees were you?
We're looking to do 13 to 20. And that's just from the, the business itself. Once we, you know, if we can get approval, we can start employing people right from the construction all the way through.
Okay. My question to staff is, what, what is projected annual tax revenue? Do we have that?
Don't have that.
That's, that's not, not available, or just don't have it here tonight?
That's not part of our, the zoning review process. That is something we'd have to confer with the Commissioner of Revenue on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues on council? Councilman Woodard. Sorry, sir. Thank you for reminding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my colleague, Councilman Moody, kind of touched on it as well. Just wanted to know how many jobs, I think you said, what, almost 20 jobs, 13 to 20 jobs could be available for hire? And how would you guys go about the hiring process? What qualifications would you have to work at this particular facility?
With this being the new industry, it's going to be on the, on the job training for quite a bit. Once we've got this set up, we've, we've, we've already spoke with TV University out of Florida and opening up a satellite location there to give classes on it, so that we'll be able to teach, have students come in and learn. And with this, with this industry growing, you know, in the next couple of years, this is really going to take off. So we can teach people from the beginning on not just growing, it's going to be management, it's going to be marketing, it's going to be the medical fields. So there's, there's quite a bit of fields that's just going to open up, but really it's going to be on-the-job training. We have a management team, we have a marketing team, we got a financial team, and we have a grow team at this point that we need to grow. We're going to have to grow our team as we start this. So at the very beginning, we're, we're going to be looking to have people come in and help us with the setup, to be able to explain it and design, you know, from, from start to finish. This is why we build this, and this is what, you know, this is what it's going to do.
And now, just being weary of your neighbors, I know you touched on what you guys would do to control any extra smells, I guess, coming from this, this facility, this manufacturer. Just want to, can we go in depth about how you guys would go about that?
Well, go ahead.
There's a, it's a charcoal and media filter. With commercial, commercial air systems, you have to draw in fresh air. You have to have fresh air intakes as part of code requirements. So we'll be drawing in fresh air and filtering as it goes through before it comes back out. So everything's going to go through a media filter. Outside of the building, there should be little to no smell. Of course, you're going to smell it inside the building.
And no noise, and no traffic.
Right. I think one of my colleagues as well asked about the retail side of this particular business. Would it be anyone congregating on the, the actual property, using any of your products, or is it just something that they just will come in, buy products, and potentially just leave?
Again, our, our product's not really going to draw that kind of crowd. It's not really a hangout kind of product. We're doing more of oils and lotions and things of that nature. So if you're coming in for arthritis care or anxiety and things along those lines, you really don't really draw a crowd that's going to come and hang out. And that's, that's the primary of our retail that's going to be.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I have no problems with the business and with your gentleman doing this, but we have protocol of how we do things here, and it's kind of putting the horse in front of the cart when we say we're going to approve it, and then they'll do all the licenses and have a final approval. So approval, so it's after your process, this is coming back to us, because there's liability involved for the council. If we don't allow it to go through the process of him getting all the documentation that he needs, whether he approve or deny it, if we're not the last folk to say yes, then there's, there's liability involved. So I would suggest that you just go through the process, produce your credentials, and even if he says no, I can say, are the credentials okay? Is the state okay with this? And then I can say yes. But it's kind of strange, and, and I'm afraid to put us, put myself out there like that. So in essence, I'm not saying no. I'm saying, whether he approve it or not, you should produce your credentials, fill out the paperwork.
You can say, and who?
Sir, sir, excuse me, please, hold just a second. Mr. Battle, if I may, this, this organization, this is a public hearing, and this particular group has gone through the process. They went through the planning process, and as a result of going through the planning process, it is now being brought before council to either vote for, to move it forward, or to not, to deny it. So at this point, they have gone through the process, and they have done everything within their, within the recommendations that the city put forth to stand before us today. So what I would ask, if there are no other questions specific to these individuals in terms of the operation and what they have put forth, is that we move this matter forward. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Have they gone through the process, Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, sir. At this point, they have gone through the use permit process to get before City Council.
And showed you the credentials.
We have all of their information, and what you have before you is a list of conditions of compliance, and that, we refer to the check they come back through the staff. Once City Council approves, it's subject to conditions. Our task is to go back to make sure they're complying with all the conditions that the City Council imposed. At that point, we can issue the zoning clearance for them to get their business license. We are satisfied with what they've provided us to this point.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions of, of the applicants? Um. Are there any other questions of, of the applicants? Madam Councilwoman, Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
I guess my question is for Deputy City Manager Baldwin. Is the problem the use permit with the location with it urban industrial, is there another suitable location that you preferred? Or we're just trying to figure out?
No, this is a, you know, this is a new, a new zoning category in the zoning ordinance that was adopted a couple of years ago. And it's the first one where we started allowing what we call urban agriculture. And in this neighborhood mixed-use district to do urban agriculture, which will be anything from this to growing tomatoes and, you know, other types of plants for commercial use. It requires a use permit. That's really all this is.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. My question is for Mr. Baldwin. Just wanna make sure, clear, the documents that were submitted to council, it shows that at the departmental level, there was an approval of this.
Staff, the staff did recommend approval.
Right.
Subject to conditions.
Right. So it was approved, subject with conditions.
Exactly.
So it moved from the department level, went before the Planning Commission. And I'm seeing this term up here that it was denied. The record shows that it was a three-three vote. So there was no approval nor denial, just failed to get the necessary.
The way this happens, the motion to approve failed.
Right.
And that's basically what you have.
Right. So it was a failure of a motion to approve. There was not a recommendation or denial from the Planning Commission.
That is correct. They did not have a motion to deny.
Right. So it's a, it was a three-three vote, and now it's before council.
That is correct.
Right. Right.
Thank you, sir. Did you have, so are there any other questions for my colleagues on council? Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Right. Let me just hear from staff. So there was no objection from the neighboring church?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
Oh, we're gonna, we can provide the parking lot for the church. So they're gonna have that. Because we're not, we're not gonna need the church, I mean, we're not gonna need a parking lot for our services. So the church will have their parking lot once we complete it. And we spoke about employment. Our salaries, as we're looking at, can be between $18 and $30 per hour.
Thank you, sir. Are there any additional questions or comments on this matter? Seeing none, sir, we thank you for your time. You may be seated. We do have a registered speaker for this public hearing. Our first speaker is Ms. Joyce Tasby. Ms. Tasby, are you present?
Yes, ma'am.
Please come forward, state your name, address, and you have five minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, the Honorable Mayor Shannon Glover and all of the City Council members and the Portsmouth family. My name is Apostle Joyce White Tasby. I have a resident at 305 Carolina Road. I have had a business in the city of Portsmouth for over four decades. Some of you are aware of it, and some may not. However, I wanted to speak on behalf of what I know that Mr. Patel has done for my company and my business. And I've also been an activist through the area for a number of years. And I, the first thing that, I had called him about contributing, again, in sponsoring our Trailblazers Sidewalk Parade. Mr. Glover, Mayor Glover, you're very much aware of it. You participated.
I am. Yes, ma'am.
And we're getting ready for our fourth annual for 2023.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was going to say something else, but when he, the CBD, I have had to use it. I was in a very bad accident in the month of April, and I couldn't even move or walk. And the pills that they gave me, I did not want to take because I know that they would be addictive. I prayed, I said, Lord, I'm not gonna take these pills. And I, it was so, I was in two weeks of excruciating pain, 24 hours a day. And it was horrible. I said, but I'm not gonna take these pills. And so the doctor, when I went to the doctor, he said, did you take your medicine? I said, no, I said the word. And so he said, well, you're gonna be in a lot of pain for the next four or five months. I said, no, I'm not either, and I'm not gonna take the pills either. So he said, Ms. Tasby, you're not gonna take this medicine? I said, no, sir, I'm not. So I called a friend of mine who's an herbalist. They bought me the CBD. And my husband began to rub it on me. That was the relief with the word of God that I got. Because the pain, I couldn't even sit up, I couldn't get out the bed, I couldn't move my arms. That's just how bad it was. But I made up in my mind, I was gonna get healed, and I, and I just couldn't take that pill. And I just wasn't gonna take them. Because they said they were addictive, and once you take them, you'll be on them. So I said, I'm not even gonna start it. So I'm saying all of that to say this, when he spoke of the, the medical purpose, I can testify to the medical reason that I am for this. And not only that, when I called him to ask him about sponsoring the Sidewalk Parade again, he said, certainly. And he said, I'm getting ready to open another project business, and he began to tell me about this. So I said, well, will you hire others and train them? He said, yes, I'll do it for you. I said, I want him to send you some people, because I've sent him people to hire him, you know, before at his hotel. And he interviewed them. He's been sponsoring different projects that I do through the years. And so I'm saying all of that again, it's when much is given, much is required. And what he's doing, he's helping our people, our neighborhoods. It's not just me he's helped, he's helped a lot of people. And when you have something like this, that's coming up, I know it's new, and I know it's different. You're petrified of the unknown, and you're afraid of what you do know. But this is something that's gonna help the economy of Portsmouth and prevention of crime. You say, how is that gonna prevent crime? Because people have jobs. We don't know what this is gonna lead to. I work with felons, I work with all kinds of different people from social disadvantage, culturally disadvantaged. But jobs and economy is one of the real reasons that we help crime. And also poor parental guidance. And I use the word church, the Portsmouth family, you know, our past mayor, Mayor Holly used to call us what? The Portsmouth family. And we still can be a family. With all the turmoil and what's being said, I still consider Portsmouth my family. And I hope that you all would consider this and look into it with the bigger picture, not just the little picture. I teach that to my students. There's always a bigger picture to everything. Our children see what's in front, but we see 20 years down the line. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Tasby. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si. Ms. Si, if you would please come forward, state your name and address. And ma'am, you will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 22-305 is a public hearing on a use permit application. U P 2212 is a request by Green Relief LLC for a use permit to grow and cultivate hemp at 1300 High Street. And the, and the due to, D to Uptown Land use study reports that the Innovation District was created for entrepreneurs to build something of value. Isn't this request something innovative? So why is there a stop sign for this entrepreneur? Okay, let's look at why there's a stop sign. What is hemp? The term hemp means the plant cannabis and any part of that plant, including the seeds thereof, and all derivatives, extracts, et cetera. Read the addendums and the presentation, and it will tell you and others why the stop sign is up. The addendums will tell you. Who got the bill passed to have legalized hemp? Who has shops selling legalized hemp? The powers that control our city says no. There you have it. Portsmouth is not about investors, it's about money from the state and federal government and grants, the people's money through high taxes and fees. Don't forget, there's something else coming along, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. You do not, you are not required to have signed up prior to this public hearing to come and speak on this public hearing. If you decide you wish to come forward, you need to state your name and address. You will have five minutes. However, you must keep your comments germane to this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this public hearing? If you state your name and address, sir, you will have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Merle Rutledge. I'm in Portsmouth, Virginia, and it's really nobody's business. I'm sorry to have to say, after I got an email that was rudely sent to me in regards to phone addresses. And y'all know by federal law, if somebody feels like their life is in danger or whatever, they don't have to disclose their address. But anyway, back to the topic. Anyway, the reason why this business should be allowed. Now, up the street on High Street, there's that cannabis outlet. I just wanna remind myself when I pass by and stuff like that, and a bunch of places that sell CBD. So why are we giving this business a hard time, but we allowing somebody else to monopolize on the same street? So if you're gonna deny him, why don't you deny that other permit for somebody else? Or why don't we be fair? Why don't we show that we can be equal and partial? And make sure this business gets a chance to operate? Just like every single sign I see around here, saying vape shop, CBD, all this other stuff, what's the difference? It's all semantics. The only reason why this business probably is having a hard time because of who's gonna compete with. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to come and speak to this public hearing? Please state your name and address, sir, and you will have five minutes.
Charles Conrad Chesventer, and I live at 3706 Greenway Court. And I would actually like to second Mr. Merle, who happens to be a Republican, but I'm a proud progressive, and I would actually like to second his opinion on the idea of allowing this. I believe that you could envision it as cornering the market on this great new industry. High Street can actually be welcome to multiple businesses on this front. I would like to look at it productively. I think you guys can decide to do that, and I would encourage you guys to do that, to encourage a big, green business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. If you need to come and speak on this matter, come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
My name is Angela Britt. I live in Chesapeake. And I totally disagree with this U P 2212. Like you said, we have a lot of neighboring facilities. Why do they have, why do they need another one here in the city of Portsmouth? Why they won't take them to their own neighborhood? More problems occur with these type of businesses. Why not build something, bring something to Portsmouth that's gonna help the people? This is not gonna help the people. There's enough drugs and crime in Portsmouth that need to be addressed.
Thank you, ma'am. This public hearing is now closed. Members of council, is there any additional discussion on this matter? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. My question is to staff. You know, we have a cannabis facility in Portsmouth already over on Seaboard Avenue. Columbia Care operates it. Have there been any issues? And that's been under operation, I think, for, what, two years, year and a half?
Yeah, there have been no issues that I'm aware of.
And the same type of facility, correct?
That was a little bit different, as they, as they mentioned in the presentation. That's a medical facility. In that case, they actually grow the product onsite. They also process it onsite as well as dispense it onsite.
So it has a retail component?
It's a, it's a medicine. So they dispense it with a prescription.
Right.
So it's similar to retail, but it's dispensed onsite.
But they process it there?
They actually, that's, that was required by the state license that they received. They had, they were required to process onsite.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, we are need, council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for approval?
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
I'm gonna vote yes, because we need to open this field up to multitude of different folk. We don't need, like you say, one or two different people of power cornering the market. And if they're in compliance with everything that is needed by the city and the state, I'm gonna go.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
We have now come to the City Manager's Report, item 22-318. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting settlement funds in the amount of $82,778.38 from the National Opioid Settlement Fund Trust and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by BHS for approved abatement purposes as defined by the Virginia Opioid Fund and Settlement Allocation MOU.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. We do have a speaker. We have a registered speaker for this item, Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 22-318 is an ordinance accepting $82,778.38 from the National Opioid Settlement Fund Trust and appropriating the money to the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services for use for the approved abatement purposes. What are the approved abatement purposes? How come the Behavioral Healthcare Services does not include this information with the submission by the Director of the Behavioral Healthcare Services to the City Manager's
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, are there, is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-319. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we're considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $31,880 of Home Investment Partnerships Program income and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Community Planning and Development Program Fund.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Thank you. We do have a registered speaker, and that is Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 22-319 is an ordinance accepting $31,880 of Home Investment Partnership Program income for the year 2023, Community Planning and Development Program Fund. This money was generated by the repayment of Home Care Housing Rehab Program and down payment and closing cost program loans. Where is the documentation for the payment of Home Care Housing Rehab Program? And what houses have been rehabilitated since you are using taxpayers' money? Where is the documentation for the houses that have received the down? Where is the documentation for the houses that have received the down payment money and their closing costs? Where is the documentation for program loans? Remember when the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority Program asked for money from the city at a work session? How come this information wasn't presented to the work session to tell the people who is getting this help from the taxpayers, taxes and fees? I am learning how the city's financial gain comes from the taxpayers, real estate taxation, and increased fees to provide others with benefits we the people had to work and sacrifice for. Remember how people used to live in Portsmouth? They had houses to live in. Now the people's homes are being taken away from them by the government and building housing complexes without any land to raise crops, have space for children to have athletic opportunities, or education to be self-sufficient. This is one example of many that the people have suffered from by people who haven't looked at the organizational structure of the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
You need, oh, sorry. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-320. And madam clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, an ordinance accepting aid to localities funding in the amount of $392,845 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and appropriating said amount in the FY 2023 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Thank you. Seeing that for this item, there are no registered speakers, is there any additional discussion amongst the members of council? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Item 22-321. And madam clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir, a resolution authorizing the conveyance of 2410, 2414, and 2416 Turnpike Road to the Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We have now come to new business, item 22-322. Boards and Commissions, Vice Mayor Barnes, Dr. Whitaker, are there any appointments to bring forward?
No, sir.
Thank you, sirs. Item 22-323. Items submitted by council members. Council members, do you have any items to submit? Seeing none, I would like to, I would like to just say and thank all of the citizens of Portsmouth, our city staff, our city manager and her team, and Ms. Erin Carter and her team, who all worked collaboratively to show a very precious time to Portsmouth's own Missy Elliott and her mother, Ms. Pat Elliott. I can tell you from speaking with them, they were very grateful and appreciative of the love that Portsmouth showed to them, and I just wanted to convey that to the citizens of Portsmouth. This was a family event and a family affair, and we want to let everyone know that thank you for all you did to make it a success. The other thing I did want to mention is our city attorney is not present tonight. Some of you may be wondering, where is, where in the world is attorney Lavanda Graham Williams? Well, she is in Richmond tonight, getting an award for Virginia Lawyers Weekly as one of the top attorneys in the state of Virginia, and she has certainly worked hard to attain that recognition. And although we could not be there to support her in person, we certainly support her in spirit. So if you see attorney Lavanda Graham Williams the rest of the week, or if you are so inclined, please send her a congratulatory message thanking her for her achievement. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. We had two individuals, one that works for the city, Principal Planner Julie Chop, and Bracy Parr, who is with Decision Sales Engineer. Mr. Parr also serves on our PPIC board. But they were named inside business, two top young professionals. They call it the Top Forty Under Forty, so that's quite an honor. I think both of those individuals got a bright future ahead of them. They've already accomplished a lot, being named to the list.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Woodard, sir, did you have, did you want the floor?
Oh, you know, I didn't, but since you gave me the floor. You know, I know, you know, we have a lot of things going on in our city. But, you know, a couple of days, we lost someone special that works for our high school football team. If you guys don't know, like you say, I think it was natural causes, but Mr. Sam Blake, he passed away from a long fight with, you know, something that he was going with. But he touched a lot of people within our city, and, you know, I just want to give him some recognition to let him know that we care as a council, as a community. And like you say, all heroes don't wear capes, you know. He didn't have a huge title or whatnot, but like you say, he worked with our kids on a daily basis. And people got to understand that, you know, you got to be a special individual sometimes to deal with these kids out here in Portsmouth. But Mr. Sam Blake, that was his passion. He talks about it a lot, and he was good at what he do. And, you know, I just want to take the time out to give him some, to notice what he's been doing as a Portsmouth citizen. Thank you.
Councilman Woodard, thank you for sharing that with the citizens and our colleagues on council. Mr. Blake will certainly be missed. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to thank the clerk's staff, clerk and her staff, for joining me and wearing pink this meeting. Of course, last meeting, we did have a presentation from the Breast Cancer Awareness Group and very notable work that they're doing. But on this coming Saturday in the festival park, there will be a breast cancer awareness walk, which I will be participating in as well. And if you have some time on your hands, I hope that you would join us for that.
Thank you, madam councilwoman, for sharing that information. And certainly, we encourage everyone to come out and participate in the breast cancer walk. And I would like to add to that, men get breast cancer, too, gentlemen. Men get breast cancer, too. About 35,000 or 3,400 men die annually due to breast cancer. So it's important for all of us to be in support of this effort. Madam City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I just would like to reiterate the update I provided earlier during the work session on the utility process for our citizens. And as mentioned last month, there was a moratorium placed on cutoffs for utilities until November the first. As for residential accounts, starting November the first, the Department of Public Utilities will begin a phased approach to address delinquent residential accounts. They will begin with notifications through door hangers, automated bill messages, and bill inserts. Once residents receive the door hanger, they will have up to 30 days to pay the delinquent amount or set, excuse me, or set up a payment plan with Public Utilities. Previously, residents were only provided three days until disconnection. If residents are not responsive within the 30 days, disconnections will resume on December the first. Disconnections will resume by route based on past due amounts. A press release will be provided informing citizens of this. There are grant programs available to assist residents with their utilities. Utility customers experiencing a financial hardship and require assistance with paying their delinquent utility bill can call the Department of Public Utilities for assistance at 757-393-8524. That's 757-393-8524. As for our commercial delinquent accounts, there are approximately 375 out of 1,800 accounts that are more than 31 days delinquent. We are currently placing door hangers and sending out letters to the top 25 highest balances. We will offer a payment plan option for a 10-month period for commercial accounts. The city will resume cutoffs on commercial accounts on November the first. We are also pursuing a contact or a contract, excuse me, with a third-party collection agency. Thank you, sir, that concludes.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
For the residential, do we know what the total balance is for all of the residential?
I didn't bring it out here with me, sir, but it was around, I believe, 6 million. But that's, I don't want to miss it. So let me get the amount, because it is based on, it captures everything between 0 and 30. So it's in between bill cycles, so that number fluctuates. But I will get the exact number, because I didn't bring it out with me. I had it last time.
Okay.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, this is for our city manager for our next council meeting. If there's an objection from council, if we could get an update on the disparity study as well as an update on where we are on the Sugar Hill property issue.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. One other item before we go into, was that it on your city manager items? Before we go into our non-agenda speakers, yesterday, myself and several city leaders, well, Sunday, excuse me, had the opportunity to attend a beautiful ceremony recognizing one of the individuals who served on this city council and has been a leader in this community, born and raised here. And he was selected and honored to be Bishop Emeritus of St. Mark Missionary Baptist Church. Bishop Curtis Edmonds, of which many of you know, and his wife, Lady Elaine, were there, and his family. And we all participated in celebrating his new position and title. And on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So certainly, if you feel inclined to send any well wishes to Bishop Emeritus Edmonds, Curtis Edmonds, please do so. Yes, ma'am, city manager?
I do have the utilities accounts with me. So as I was standing, the total outstanding balance is 6 million dollars. However, the category between 31 and 45 days outstanding is 1.5 million. And the category between 61 and 90 days is 4 million, a little over 4 million. So the total goes from 31 days to 360 a year. 65 days is a total of 6 million dollars.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Since you've got the figures, do you have the commercial figures as well?
So the commercial list I have in front of me is as of 9/14, because that's when you ask for it last. Again, the total at that time was 6,724. However, between 0 and 30 was 6 million itself. So that's why I said it fluctuates between bill cycles, so it's not always captured. The most, other than that, you have a three-year, four-year, you have 111,000, 123,000, and 10 years or more is 105,000. But the biggest account is between that 0 and 30 days, and they may have just not paid their bill as of this time, at that time.
Sure.
Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Madam manager, we received the report back on the upper categories. And looking at the rehab water tower at Victory and Churchland, we received a really disappointing email from Citizen where they took a picture of the Missy Elliott Boulevard, and in the background was this really horrible-looking water tank. And I see that we're scheduled for rehab. Could we get a timeline of when that work may be started and done for completion? Because we do have our casino coming online next year as well, and we don't want more of the same negative press, if we can.
Yes, ma'am. We will definitely get a timeline. I asked Mr. Reich for a timeline last week. Unfortunately, he's off this week, but I will get back with you on the timeline.
Okay, thank you.
I also want council to realize it's more than just painting.
Yeah.
It needs some severe work done to it before we can just paint it.
Of course, thank you, ma'am. And one correction to my last message, charge it to my head and not my heart, but Bishop Edmund's wife's name is Evelyn, not Elaine. Lady Evelyn, so let me get that right, okay? Moving forward, we are now come to non-agenda speakers. And madam clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Our remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience. It should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, madam clerk. Our first speaker this evening, Mr. Sergio Neil, sir. If you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. My name is Sergio Neil. I live at 1420 Elm Avenue in this great city. I'm here tonight because unfortunately, this may be one of my very last council, attending one of my very last council meetings as a resident of the city of Portsmouth. Like Missy Elliott, I too will be leaving this city to venture into a new career path sometime soon. And I heard, in saying that, it's very unfortunate that a lot of our citizens, a lot of people born and raised here, have had to leave this city in order to pursue their dreams and certain career paths. Because we just don't have those opportunities here, or they haven't been capitalized on. I see that we did have, you know, those celebrations last Monday. And while the Missy Elliott Boulevard dedication ceremony was going on, and a lot of people, you know, were celebrating, out of my window, I saw someone on the path of losing their life. They were in the process of having, they were in the process of having an active overdose. And, you know, I took a picture of the scene, I emailed it to council, because I wanted to be sure that things of that nature get the same level of importance. be sure that things of that nature get the same level of importance, the same dedication of city staff to make sure that we address issues like that. Because I've said it time and time again, a lot of kids live on the corner where I live at, and I don't think none of them want to wake up the next morning and have, after a nightmare of seeing somebody dead on the ground, dying from a drug overdose, dying from a gunshot wound, dying from some type of other violence. But unfortunately, that's the reality in this city. I think a lot of times, we put emphasis on, you know, positivity, and we should, but in order to really clean up this city, we have to address the skeletons in our closet. I think some of us know all too well what they are. And I think that it would behoove everybody to just go ahead and call it for what it is, and let's get it dealt with. You know, before I leave this city, I will say this, you know, Portsmouth will always be my home, never nowhere else. No matter how far I go, I will always stay concerned about what goes on here because I have a lot of family members that live here. My grandfather dedicated forty years to this city as a public works employee. He's been retired for over thirty-some years, but yet still, every, he has never left this city at all. And it goes to say, and I asked him, you know, why didn't he want to move anywhere else? Why didn't he want to go see anything else, you know, do something different? And his number one answer is, this is home. And, you know, so, you know, I tried to live on that same path because I never thought I would leave. But as opportunity presents itself, it's hard to tell somebody to limit themselves at the ceiling that we currently have in this city. A lot of it, for some people, comes at the state level, where they want to work in certain fields such as substance abuse recovery, residential substance abuse recovery, where they can't. Because they have had crimes that they've committed that are unfortunate burial crimes, and those people would be the best people to have a relationship with those that are going through that same path. So in saying that, you know, I think that what we need to do, what I implore all of you to do, is take a hard look at what's going on in this city. Find out why it takes to leave this city in order for people to be successful, because I think there's an imbalance going on. Sure, there are successful people that remain here, I'm not saying that, you know, but for the majority, for what I'm seeing, a lot of people have left. So I thank you all neighbors for your time and attention, and I wish you all well, and I may or may not be back before I leave. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Kodalde Yotrowski. Mr. Yotrowski, sir, please state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, council, and other neighbors. I'm going to depart from my expected remarks and speak to a couple of other things. First, sorry to hear that the previous speaker is leaving us. I hope he will visit frequently. He has contributed to the dialogue in this city in a very constructive manner over a number of years. Secondly, I would like to congratulate you all for the collegial manner in which you all conducted yourselves tonight. It's refreshing to see it, and I hope there'll be more of it in the future. Next, I'd like to speak to the speaker's statement that was imposed on the citizens of this locality by your predecessors but which you have not seen fit to alter. I watched, I watched the sausage being made as the previous council tried to figure out a way to muzzle the citizens without running afoul of First Amendment protections, and that speaker's statement was the result. But really, the speaker's statement has some flaws. I'm not a lawyer, but as somebody who has some familiarity with the First Amendment to the Constitution, I see where it definitely is prior restraint, and it's extremely malleable. There is a lot of discretion given to the presiding officer of the council and to any member who wants to call point of order when somebody comes to this podium and expresses an opinion that is distasteful or critical regarding members of council. You really don't have that authority. You have the authority to maintain good order. You have the authority to maintain civility. But if a citizen comes up here and says, "Council member so-and-so acted in bad faith in a particular matter that affects the public interest," you could, under your speaker's statement, declare that person out of order. But you work for us. And if we lack the ability to call to your attention what we consider miscarriages of your office, then we are left with the option of removing you through recall or voting you out in an upcoming election. So I think that it would not be inappropriate for you all to reconsider your speaker's statement and figure out how you can use it appropriately, as I've stated, to maintain civility and good order without muscling criticism. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Coleman Young. Mr. Young, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name's Coleman Young. I live at three oh three Effingham Street. Good evening, mayor, members of council, and city manager. There are two things I want to go over. Ms. Burke, last session, you brought up a good point or something I can agree with in the fact that situation for a witness protection program for families of ones murdered. And I understand the budget consideration, but the budget is a list of priorities. Take the budget you have, you have a seven hundred and sixty-three million dollar budget. If you took ten percent of that, you don't even need that, maybe one percent, one percent of that, which is seven million dollars, you could set up a witness protection plan for these people. Because all the decisions you make, the most important thing is life. People are dying, young people are dying. They don't have the opportunities or the pleasures of being an adult, or being a parent, or being a grandparent. And I would strongly urge you to take that in consideration and make money for it. Because the people are not able to testify because of a fear of being intimidation. You know, okay. The second thing, last time I came here, my last thoughts were that this was a group of four were corrupt, and they are corrupt. It's come out this past week in the suit that you have. Now, I look at it, there's two points there. One, it's the fact of greed because of getting kickbacks and pay-as-you-go. The second is coercion. It, you know, there are three motivations for a person, for people. One is power, one's money, and one is sex. Well, you've got the two out of three. The other thing, the money wise, okay, let me go back. I've been in the city now for over, since nineteen seventy-six. There are eight mayors that have been here at council, and who knows how many council members have come. Realize, members, that y'all are voted in here, we try to bet you the best thing you have to represent the city. But you are, you are serving a bigger cause, you're serving the city for the best things they're doing. As Mayor Glover knows, I'm a member of the Episcopal Church. There are four Episcopal churches. Every Sunday, they pray for the mayor. And we pray for wise decisions and good actions. So I ask you to search your conscience of the things that you've done. Have you made wise decisions? Have you made right actions? I'm asking, can you have a suit? The main thing is you have a suit before you, that Ms. Jones asked for five million dollars. But she also has an alternative. She's willing to take one-tenth of that, take five hundred thousand dollars for the step down of the group of four. I plead with you. Economically, it would be better for the city for five hundred thousand dollars to step down. Search your hearts, have you really served the city the best way you can? Because, I mean, to me, okay, the decision to make, you're going to have to make the decision on settlement. Most likely, it'll be settled out of court because the city is too embarrassed to go to court and have more information come out. I ask you just as, the four group of four, step down, and the people, the citizens are not going to be mad about it, but we do wish you to be able, that we can move on and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Young, you just stood at that podium and found four men guilty of an allegation. That is slander.
No, sir. You will have your day in court.
No, no, you just gave me my day in court when you said that they're guilty. You did this.
Yes.
Let me explain to you. What was performed was an allegation, and an allegation made during a political season has one purpose, that's to make those gentlemen that has been doing well by this city look bad, okay? And most people will miss that. And the reason why is about money. But it's not about money that the men you're talking about have taken. It's about money that those folk who can afford those ads in the paper, can afford to pay their surrogates, it's about the money that they want to get, that they have been getting traditionally and running this city. And I understand those folk that can't understand what's happening, and I sympathize with them. But that's why we have children eliminating one another. That's why we have excessive taxes. That's why we have corruption. And you'll find that the folk you thought were corrupt are the angels.
You couldn't come.
Sir, that concludes the conversation. Our next speaker is Mr. Cedric Crado. Mr. Crado, sir, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city manager. Great Center of Portsmouth, seven twenty-five Bow Street. I come before you today, there's a lot going on in our city, as a lot of you guys may not know, we have a gang issue, whether you want to believe it or not. I brought a young man here with me probably the last council meeting, and he was having issues in school, and the mom contacted me and was asking me what she should do. So I spoke to the young man, I told him to write all his feelings on paper. Because sometimes in our community, we lash out with verbal abuse, we do the non-traditional things to our children when we're living in a new age and era. I wanted to know the kid's emotions. That kid is here tonight, and he'll be speaking. That kid lost two first cousins, at one age of sixteen, both of them were sixteen years old. And the reason I came tonight was for him and the family. Yes, and that's neither here nor there, so I'll let him say what he's going to say when he's up. But three questions to the city manager. When are we going to get an updated crime prevention plan? The second one is, the CCTVs, when is there going to be an implementation of that, and how are we going to man it? Also, the opera fund for organizations who receive funding the first wave, is there a report on who received the money and any requirements for the next go-around for organizations? We're not a 501(c)(1)(3) because we don't solicit people for dollars. We choose to lean on the community for the resources. I have the opportunity to fill out the 501(c)(1)(3), and again, we, I choose not to solicit people in businesses. I believe the city should be accountable for that. And again, and also, on last Monday, y'all had a, I want to congratulate Missy Elliott, which is my daughter's godmother, for her street being named after her. But I also want to ask, why weren't any of the council people at the crime initiative that happened in Norfolk with Governor Yonkers, Governor Yonkers and Lieutenant Governor Sears? I didn't see anybody from the city in the crime initiative. I seen the chief of police, but I thought the crime initiative would probably take precedent than the name of a street, or we could have split it up. But anyway, I come before you for unseen tears, we serve the parents of victims who lost their loved ones, and I'm going to say their name like I usually, and I'll end mine on that note. Charles Mosley, these are victims of gun violence who were murdered. Corey Turri, Timothy Beal, Emmanuel Turri, Jeff Basemore, Jaquan Johnson, Carlton Dodd, Tashi Wolf, Anthony Skeeter, Requon Morgan, Nasia Hicks, Jamil Howard, Dorian Granger, Amajee Lee, Demar Mitchell, Keisha Smith, DeAndre Morrison, Joshua Sykes, Antoine Wiggins, Talique Farmer, Vernon Nowhere, Yashim Kerway, James Hill, Dante Copeland, Robert Artis, Malcolm Hoskins, Javard Williams, Kamadre Howard, DeQuan Epps, Omar Booker, Robert Langston, Nicholas Suggs, Richard Tucker, Timothy Shine, Brian Williams, Michael Curtis Walton, Kyrie Thomas, William Suffrich, Carson Baines, Antonio Bunch, Curtis Richardson, Andre Hall, Kiara, Victor Green, David Branch, Lawrence Kofa, Krista Jacobs, Derek Parker, Demetrius White, Boob Staten, Malani Ariat, Everett, Amarian Collins, Andrew Pataia, Kareem Barshay, Rodney Anderson, Gary Fields, Jermont Mitchell, Kevin Warren, Keith Warren, Requon Gray, Dion Lofton, Georgia Devonte Lee, Alicia Dion Mears, Ashley Merricks, Robert Parker, Dana Spence, Terrence Johnson, Devon Crosby, Tyrell Jones, Ariel McLaren, Josavia Hill, Keandre Jenkins, John Plummer, Bernard Clack, Maze Moon, Anthony Brown, Jaquan White, Christopher Washington, Clifton Privy... Ashanti Britt, Lamont Brown, Donald Thornton, and Calvin Coulson. These are the reasons I say these names. Again, why weren't more city council people at the crime initiative that we had in Norfolk? And I greatly appreciate you guys.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si. Ma'am, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. On October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, there was a presentation regarding a draft twenty twenty-three potential state and federal legislative initiatives given by the legislative aide Ms. Neal. When was the town hall meeting called to ask the people what initiatives are needed in his or her neighborhood? Did a representative of the five districts meet with the people to get this information into the draft legislative package budget to represent the needs of the people living in this highest real estate tax rate in the state? Who were the legislators representing Portsmouth? And when did he or she engage with the people? I took the draft legislative packet handout and reviewed it to understand how these laws or policies were going to affect the people. There's a request for one million dollars for the port's road maintenance. How much money does the port pay in lieu of taxes? There is a request to fund the High Street Innovation Corridor for four point eight million dollars from the state fund. The city has already been awarded nineteen point three million in a federal grant, leaving four point eight for the state to pay. All this is taxpayers' money. And yet, the people weren't a part of the decision-making process of whether or not we wanted to have a multimodal complete roadway improvement project along High Street between MLK Expressway to Chestnut Street. How do the people know if this money will improve public safety, revitalize new businesses, or consumers will invest in the city to provide taxable revenue streams in Portsmouth and the state? There was no meeting with the public to explain anything about High Street Corridor. All right? I saw the referendum that people voted for the casino. This High Street Corridor was slipped into the referendum without the people's knowledge or consent. In our Virginia Constitution, it reads in Article One of our Bill of Rights, Section Two, that all power is vested in and consequently derived from the people. That the executive officers are their managers and perform services and at all times responsible to we, the people. The Bill of Rights goes on to read in Section Three, whenever any official of government is found inadequate to produce happiness and safety against the danger of maladministration, a majority of the community has a right to abolish the government in such a manner as shall be judged most conducive to the public welfare. So when a letter was written to the engineer to do this road project that was initiated by the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization and the Long Range Transportation Plan without the people's knowledge or consent is maladministration by the elected officials. The number one priority is to have all the public utility pipeline replaced downtown, not borrow money for a multimodal complete roadway improvement project. If these elected officials are going to use the people for his or her money and not set priorities, then the people need to abolish the government sitting up there that has taken away our right to self-govern. People, if you, well, I'm not gonna say that. There's a way to have a group of people to march up to the council and remove those who have betrayed his or her oath of office. In God we trust, not the elected.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Kamari Caraway. Kamari Caraway. Welcome, Kamari.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kamari Caraway. I live on Thirty-seven Dale Drive. I stand before you about these murders in our city, Portsmouth, Virginia. On January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, on Tuesday, about noon, I lost a cousin more like my big brother, Yashin Caraway, to gun violence. He was only sixteen years old. I want to say how it made me feel. Okay, so when it first happened, I'm not going to lie, I wanted them dead. But I said to myself, I'm just making the city worse than it already is. Making, making another mother cry and bury their child. I'm tired of seeing that. On February first, twenty twenty-two, again on a Tuesday, I lost another cousin, Richard Tucker, to gun violence. He also was sixteen years old. I just keep crying because I already lost one cousin, now another one. I am mad. When will it stop? I have one more thing to say. How can y'all all stand together as one to name a street after Mrs. Elliott, but would not stand for these murders? Babies, boys, and girls are getting killed. It's sad. I am mad. Two of them was my cousins. Stand for these murders. Show us kids that you care. All I see y'all do is fuss and go back and forth. Y'all even cuss. Y'all are supposed to be our leaders. Yet y'all act like us kids. So who is leaders and who's the kids? Get it together. Help your city.
Thank you, Kamari. Our next speaker is David Hall Senior. David Hall Senior. Is David Hall Senior here? I don't see Mr. Hall, so we'll move to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammond, sir, please come forward, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Evening, sir.
Name is Leon Hammonds, eight oh nine Bowie Court. I want to congratulate you all about coming one hundred percent on Mrs. Elliott, even though I don't do the type of music she likes. I'll do, I'm from the old school. We have more talent from Portsmouth, but people don't know that because people have not recognized them. And the citizens of Portsmouth need to let city council know so that city council can recognize them. We have people that, regardless of what color, that graduated from product years ago in the fashion industry, and there were famous people too, that they need to bring up their names to let city council know that besides music, just like in sports, which my cousin, Jewish catalog, and there are other people out there. You know, I'm not trying to down anybody. I'm just bringing up everybody from Portsmouth. Okay, now, let me get down to the other facts. It was very interesting reading in the newspaper about the previous city manager. That was very interesting. I don't know whether it was taped or did one of, I can't think of the FBI top man did on Trump, but, you know, if she wrote down everything. But it was interesting. It was like a trick-or-treat type thing early. But it's gonna be interesting in the following because it's gonna be, some more gonna come up. I'm quite sure it is. But all in due time. And second, I'd like to know as far as with the police department. That situation about the detective striking that handcuffed person. I'm wondering, I agree with you what the chief did. I'm just wondering a couple of things. Did the chief do it because of the body cam? Or did the chief do it because his partner reported it? Because if it was, if the body cam wasn't there, because everybody knows how the police department sticks together. All of them don't stick together, but most of them stick together. But the bottom line is that it's interesting that it was done correctly. But I don't want that to happen to anyone else. To be handcuffed, laying down, and someone come and strike you. Especially me. Because I would not like that at all. Especially when I'm unhandcuffed. But the thing about it though is that we need to progress a little better than what we're doing. And after November the eighth, we will find out if we're gonna move forward or stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, come forward, state your name and address. Ma'am, you will have five minutes.
Thank you for allowing me. My address is one thirty-nine Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia, two three seven oh two. I feel sometimes my zip code is not a zip code that not being addressed in some of the things. I'm bringing something that I didn't talk about too much about. For an example, I have video pictures that I took in different parts of the city about transformer. I'm aware that Dominion Energy and the transformers is their responsibility, but also it's a thing that I found out. The funds that is implemented to put the transformers through the funds of the thirty-six eighty-four. I'm gonna give you an example. The brother just spoke about on council about Samuel that died and will be buried tomorrow. Their family and the church is holding like church's deliverance. That was one of the transformers in the telegram pole. And I advise that it's an emergency because eventually it's gonna collapse. Also, the transformers in Cavalier Manor in another neighborhood I want to talk about and the person experienced inside electrical problem. And I used myself for him to learn that my transformer that I've been complaining to Dominion Energy was, one day, my light start getting dim, my refrigerator start having frost, my freezer had frost, and also my recycicals wasn't working. So I remember I have a deceased family member that was telling me how to troubleshoot things on the internet and ask and get answers. And it took me to the transformer. So I called the Dominion Energy to come out. And they said, well, you got underground service, so that ain't the problem. We check your meter, that's not a problem. But we going up to the pole. It did damage to a TV of mine's. And also, they promised to put a claim number, which they did. I just haven't got it yet. But I want the city officials to know that a lot of money is being spent for some of the commercial areas. And I have videos concerning the transformer for like on turnpike for the commercial. And then I noticed things going on in Old Town. But I want to see some things go on transformers and the trees. Eventually, I got a letter Saturday way from Dominion. And it acknowledged to myself and Emmanuel. And it talked about the vines and the tree limbs causes the power to go off. Where they was aware of me complaining because I do not run away from talking to people. I don't care how rich they are or what their position is. And I let them know how I felt. I was surprised to get a letter. I don't know how many other people might have got that letter, but I was addressing it. And so a lot of things I address here in the city, not to disrespect our leaders, but to bring to the table that if we come together, and the name of my corporation is Together We Can Make a Difference. And a lot of people know me back in the time on different radio station, newspapers, black, white, whatever. I miss Ms. Idol K because she covered me. And I say to the people, until we start addressing everyone equally and make them feel like their tax dollars are being spent and to address those transformers, I feel that the church is in danger. And I seen they steeper when the lightning hit and it was off and the church caught on fire. But I believe it had something to do with the transformer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Sir, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Merle Rutledge. How about everybody here state their name and addresses? Let's see how comfortable y'all are. Now, at first, I wasn't even gonna come here. At first, I said, I didn't have time today. So I looked at my wrist, now I got time. How dare you? How dare you make politics out of your job? How dare you send a clerk to send me an email saying what's my name and address? You know good and well, the reason why you don't send out your name and address because you scared the same city I walk in. Let's get real. Let's get real. Let's get real. I love the city. I was born here. December the twenty-fifth, nineteen eighty, Maryview Hospital. I have fought civil rights all over this country. And the First Amendment, put a notice to claim, city attorney, for what that guy just said exactly, the speaker disclaimer is illegal and against the First Amendment. I'm allowed to do that, so now you gotta notice. But then I had to think about, what would cause all of a sudden for me to get an email asking me for some information that y'all clearly know by federal law and by state law doesn't have to be done for those who declare their candidacy? But I still don't see y'all giving out your names and addresses, just like people find out names and addresses through the witness protection program that y'all no longer find. I'm out here. Unafraid, unapologetic, and I'm not gonna let anybody intimidate me because you don't like what I say. I wasn't brought up that way. I was brought up to speak the truth, continue to speak the truth. I wasn't brought up that way. I was brought up to speak the truth, continue to speak the truth, so help me God. Violence is plaguing the city. Adictions is plaguing the city. High taxes is plaguing the city. We got kids talking up here right now, talking about y'all not doing y'all job. May I, may I ask you your name and address? Can, can the schools get that? Can the people get that? You know why? Because you don't want them picking and protesting at your place. Because they ain't mad at me. They mad at the stuff that they reading in that newspaper about y'all. I'm not in it. But also, at the same timeframe, I figured, what did I talk about this week that made my week interesting? So let's get to the point. $400,000 on a termination clause for the city manager. What was the relationship y'all talked about before this council about the appropriate relationship? It came up. Didn't come up from me. It came up from y'all. Then all of a sudden, I get an email? First, investigate how that contract came about. First, investigate how the four angels is really the four devils. I'm a bad Republican on my shirt because guess what? I approve every single date, but I'm here for the people, not here for a political party. Y'all here for politics. I'm here to save lives. I told people, I'm all proud of Missy Elliott. But go back to the same street. I don't see y'all there. Just like nobody saw y'all in Norfolk. Y'all don't care about people. Y'all facial expressions show everything about y'all. Y'all spirit is spineless. If you ain't gonna save you, you ain't gonna save this city. You ain't gonna get people back their lives, but you could give them a notification when the power cuts off. Listen, I'm not here to insult y'all. I'm not here to waste my time. And I'm not here to be Democrat or Republican. I'm here to find some kind of reason for y'all to love people as much as they claim to love you because they believe in you, they vote for you, they are hoping that you are the change that you are committed to. Not the same old same old. I guess $5.3 million wakes everybody up. And I hope she gets it. Because I wanna know who's gonna get that $400,000 for the incompetence that I see every single day here in Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Angela Britt. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Father God, we give you the praise and honor. We ask you to continue to open up their eyes and get them ear to hear as we speak as the people, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
My name is Angela Britt. No, I don't reside here in Portsmouth, but I have family members here in Portsmouth who's having issues with the city of Portsmouth. I would like to speak on public safety. The Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authorities. Their logo is that they strive to provide peaceful, safe, and enjoyable community for all residents at Dale's Homes. I find it a little hard to believe when someone's child is being killed each and every day. Safe, what is safety definition for the city of Portsmouth and the Redevelopment Housing Authority? And how they gonna keep their children safe in their community? The public safety here in the city of Portsmouth under the Housing Authority. I went back and I looked up a couple of things in reference to the city of Portsmouth public safety. I found out that they have, Deborah, I found out that they have a Public Safety Redevelopment Housing Authority building located right in Dale's Home, of course, unmonitored and unstaffed. They also stated that in both of these situations, they can apprehend and prosecute a criminal defensive by giving out sentations and lease termination. Let's talk about the lease termination within Dale's Home community. Lease termination, what a joke. When gang members live within the Dale's Home community, they know they do, with family members, and this is a known fact. So Portsmouth Re- Health Redevelopment Housing Authorities and the city of Portsmouth? What are you gonna do about that? How can you stop gang violence when you are housing these members? What is it that after a gang shooting activities, these same members run inside their residence where they are living? Who are involved in these incidents that occur before the police get there? Direct incidents occur from the shooting and the gang violence, and then they run right into the houses. So how's that gonna work the city of Portsmouth and the Redevelopment Housing Authority? How are you gonna address these major problems within Dale's Home community? The citizens really need to know. Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, under Virginia Code 192.13, you, that you have trained officers licensed and certified by the Department of Criminal Justice Services that have full arresting and investigation power. We are not talking about the Portsmouth City Department for the Portsmouth Police. We're talking about officer hired by the Criminal Justice Service proactive patrol all managed properties for the city of Portsmouth and the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. So where are these proactive patrol officers? And when do they patrol? What are their hours? The Dale's Home community needs to know because no one really understands where these officers are at. In conclusion, the bottom line is Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority and the city of Portsmouth have great responsibility to their citizens. What are you gonna do? The gang activity, the gang violence, and the killing that occur each and every night in Dale's Home. Residents want to know. How are you gonna keep their children safe? What are their short-term and long-term goals to address these killings of our young black youth? Have any of these questions been addressed within the board meetings? Because they do have a board, tenant board association. This is the person name and number you can reach them at. Anyone can join 18 years of age who live in that resident Dale's Home. What are we gonna do? How's we gonna curb or stop this gun violence and killing our young children? When you can't allow your children to go outside to play because of gang activity and gang violence within their community? Or the resident are afraid to allow their children to go outside because of fear. Their children is going to be shot or killed. So again, Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority in the city of Portsmouth, what are you gonna do to curb this violent or to stop these killings and the crime within the community? Dale's Home residents have the right to know what's your solution or activities for their community. Again, the Public Redevelopment Housing Authority, they have a building that's not monitored. May I continue, Mayor?
Please finish your thought.
That is not monitored. We also understand that they have a license plate reader for these gang violence when they come into the neighborhood that's broken. And also, I went and I did a little more research. I went out to Dale's Home. There's only one street in that whole area with all of these signs where the high levels of crime occurs. I witnessed gang members sitting in their cars, kickbacked, just sitting around waiting. It's a one-way street in and a one-way street out. All these signs on one street, one street. Prosecution and all of this. Where, when would they be prosecuted? When would they be terminated or terminate their lease? And how are we gonna curb this crime in the city? I'm willing to do whatever it takes to work with the councils. No, I'm not a resident of Portsmouth, but again, I'm very concerned about my family members in this area. So it's a lot to be done. So city of Portsmouth and the public Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, what are your plan? Why is it such two different entities when we all can come together as one?
Thank you, ma'am.
And for those one that's sitting here watching me on social media, get up and do something about it and stop worrying about who's speaking when your children is being killed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we adjourn our meeting tonight, I will ask, are there any other items to submit before council? Do want to remind all the citizens of Portsmouth to exercise your constitutional right and vote. This meeting is adjourned.